This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, July 2nd. Please stand for the invocation led by Pastor Tony Legere and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Help me sing. Oh beautiful, far spacious skies, or amber waves of green, or purple mountains majesty above the fruity plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, and crown thy good with brotherhood from sea to shining sea. Come on, Mobile, sing it. God bless America, land that I love. Stand beside her and guide her through the night with a light from above. From the mountains to the prairies, to the ocean wide we fall. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America, my home sweet home. Shall we say our pledge together? I pledge allegiance. God bless America, my home sweet home. God bless America.
Councilmember Penn?
Here.
Councilmember Carroll?
He's on his way down.
Okay. President Small?
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Councilmember Woods?
Here.
Vice President Gregory?
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
It's good to see everyone this morning. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, please at this time put on the off of the vibrator position, the off of the vibrator position. Every week, I read these abbreviated rules of the council, but now I'm going ahead this morning and going to read them like I do every week. I'm gonna go back and finish talking about it once I finish reading the abbreviated rules of this council. Any person that is desiring to address the council must sign in indicating the resolution to ordinance appeal of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When addressing the council, the speaker must state his or her name. Any person that is desiring to speak to the council on a non agenda item must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 p.m. on the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified and pertaining to the city of Mobile business. Any person who has not given proper notice to the city clerk office and wishes to speak on a non agenda item would not be allowed to address the council. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to address the council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minute. One minute remaining for summarizing. The second bell indicates the time has expired. When addressing the council, there is to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there would be no undue applause and or public outcry allowed. And as I had stated before I started reading, we do have a whole section of rules how this meeting should go. Again, every week, I read the abbreviated version of it. If you care to have a copy of the rules or procedures, please contact our city clerk office. But I want to point out a couple of things before we start this meeting. Up under the section, it reads rules of debate. No person from the general public shall enter into debate with any members of the council Also up on the communication with the council and council meetings. This is section 2-62, up under subsection C, excuse me, D, and it reads violation of council rules and destructive behavior. Any member of the public present in the council chambers during a meeting who engage in a loud, boisterous, or offensive conduct or other conduct detailed in section 2-63 below that disrupts the meeting is subject to removal from the council meeting and/or ban on attendance at future council meetings. Any person who engage in such behavior shall be warned by the presiding officer to come to order. If the person continued in said behavior, it shall be in the destruction, destruction, excuse me, of the sergeant at arms to remove them with or without request by the presiding officers. Members of the council may bring to the presiding officer attention any disruption they believe to be occurring during the meeting. When at such point of order is made, the presiding officer shall have the discretion to issue the warrant described in this section. Bans on attendance from destructive behavior. Any person who is warned by the presiding officer under the previous subsection, whether they were actually removed from the meeting or not, may, in the presiding officer discretion, be subject to a ban or attendant at future council meeting. For a first offense, the ban shall not be more than 30 days. For a second offense, the ban shall be no more than 60 days. For any subsequent offenses, the ban shall not be more than 120 days. In the subject, excuse me, I need my glasses on today. Any person subject to a ban shall not enter the council chamber during or immediately prior to the meeting. The sergeant at arms, which is the policeman, has the power to enforce the provision and serve as a complaint for any charges related to, as the saying, so long as the witness of behavior is at issue. And again, for a couple of meetings in the past, we had unfortunately had to put individuals out of this meeting. But I did not extend my rights as to banning them from this meeting. When you banned out of this meeting or asked to leave this meeting, right then and there, we can ban you for 30 days. This rules have been in effect for a while, but starting today, again, it's not my desire to put nobody out of this meeting. This is a business meeting for the citizens. It's a right for us seven to be up here to conduct the business, it's a right for, excuse me, it's a privilege for all seven of us to be up here, conduct the city business, and it's a privilege for the orders to be out there, listen to the city business, and also participating by listening. Noise and talking disrupts the city clerk office. They cannot understand what's going on, and they also disrupt us. But again, from this day forth, any such, if I had to do what I have done in the past, there will be bans on coming to the city council meetings.
Right. Madam Clerk. Approval of minutes of June 18th.
So moved.
Second.
Then properly move in second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Communications for Mayor Stimson.
I'll bring greetings on behalf of Mayor Stimson to everyone in his absence, and I'll be making remarks on his behalf. The last week in the city of Mobile was a really big week. We had a new section of the Three Mile Creek, approximately .6 miles that have been added to that section. This will also connect our neighborhoods and provide outdoor activities for cyclists and walkers with more sections of the Three Mile Creek Trail that are in progress. We also, last week, M.A.A. launched a new flight, the inaugural flight to Dulles International Airport. This provides direct flights between Mobile and the regions in Washington, D.C., and connects Mobileans to an international hub with greater flight operations. The flight also spurs the economic growth of the region in Mobile. We also had the opening of the Africa Town Hall and Food Bank. This is a new asset for our community, provides offices for the community organizations, as well as a food bank run by local partners. We also would like to thank the Mobile County for its partnership and support of this project. The city of Mobile's traffic court is moving, and this is due to the impending demolition and construction at the civic center site, but the municipal court is now moving to the Government Plaza. This will be in the ceremonial courtroom. That starts today at 2:00 with the traffic court, and then Wednesdays at 5:00 p.m. Thank you for the Mobile staff for all the coordination and efforts, and also the county courthouse for allowing the accommodations in the ceremonial courtroom. There's more information about traffic court at thecityofmobile.org if people need more information there. We'll also have signage up at the expo hall to direct people back to Government Plaza should they not get the word. Also joining the city of Mobile is Kendall Young. He is the city's first homeless outreach coordinator with more than a decade of experience with Housing First and the waterfront rescue mission. He will establish the first outreach program for homelessness in the city of Mobile and connect homeless people to services to help get them back on their feet and off the streets. You can call Curtis Graves for more details on Kendall Young, and I'll have him join me
Counsel President, I'll conclude the remarks from the mayor.
Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
Second.
Then properly move in second in the discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for waivers of the noise ordinance at 457 Charles Street on July 4th from 2:00 to 10:00 p.m., at 601 State Street on July 28th from 2:00 to 7:00 p.m., at 206 State Street on October 5th from 2:30 to 7:00 p.m., at Doyle Park on July 6th from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., and at 1550 Wood, Fleetwood Drive on July 4th from 5:00 to 10:00 p.m.
So moved. Second.
Properly move in second in the discussion. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Appeal passes.
We have a request for a waiver of the noise ordinance at 3370 Sheringham Drive on July 6th from 9:00 a.m. until 10:00 p.m.
So moved.
Second. In the discussion?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Davis.
The applicant indicated has signed up to speak to the city council, and I would ask that before the city council vote on this particular item, that we bring around Ms. Cotton, who's the applicant, to come forward and make her statement to us. Ms. Cotton, here.
Good morning. My name is Brianna Cotton, and I'm here in reference to two noise ordinance waiver requests, one the council denied and one that is on the agenda before you today. I would like to present the council with the full spectrum of information regarding the situation that I have been dealing with so that you can cast an informed vote. During the pre-council meeting of June 11th, Councilman Davis urged his fellow council members to deny my request for a noise ordinance waiver and stated that we have had out of control parties in the past, we are not good neighbors, and that we have, that he has heard from all of my neighbors that they are against us being granted noise ordinance waivers. First, it was very offensive, embarrassing, and hurtful to be characterized as a bad neighbor in a public meeting of record by someone that I have never met, and in fact, the only correspondence we had prior to that statement was me reaching out for help on this very matter. We have endured being yelled at, cursed at, dog feces being thrown over a chain link and wooden privacy fence into our yard on accident, and the police called on us without lawful reason multiple times. Each time, we have attempted to turn the other cheek, be the bigger person, and remain cordial, but at this point, it has just gone too far. We are unable to enjoy our backyard, and we are fearful for our safety and for our lives. As you all know, Sheringham Drive is where the tragedy took place, which resulted in the death of a 16-year-old child three doors down from us, and I don't want my family to be the next family on the news grieving because of a neighbor. Second, I do not believe Councilman Davis' statements are accurate. We pride ourselves on being good neighbors, and our neighbors know that they can, and they have called on us to watch their homes while they are out of town, help get their cars started, or just carry something heavy to the street. We are good neighbors, and we have good neighbors. I also have signed statements here from multiple neighbors noting that they have never contacted Councilman Davis to complain about us, and that they are in favor of us being granted noise ordinance waivers because we are respectful when we do occasionally host our family at our home. One neighbor is attempting to harass us and weaponize law enforcement against us. M.P.D. has never issued us a noise ticket, never asked us to turn our music down, and never asked us to stop hosting our family. In fact, quite the opposite has occurred. They have asked this neighbor to leave us alone, and they have told her that we are doing nothing wrong. We are just at a point where we don't know what else to do. We are requesting this noise ordinance waiver not to have any unruly parties, but as a proactive protective measure against one neighbor attempting to weaponize city officials against us and to prevent a tragedy like what occurred in November. We are requesting the noise ordinance so that we can enjoy the home that we worked hard to purchase, meal prep, and plant tomatoes in our garden at 12:00 p.m. on a Saturday, and occasionally host our families without the police being called to our home that is supposed to be our safe place. Thank you for your time and for listening.
Ms. President, I have a few comments to make. Thank you, Ms. Cotton, for coming down today. First of all, my recollection of my comments when this came up several weeks ago was not that it was out of control, but that I had heard from a number of different residents of the area complaining about it. This is a residential area you live in. You got residences on either side, across the street, you have, I think, woods in the back of you. But the fact of the matter is, I did hear from a number of the residents, they started during the day, and I heard from them all night long. Now, you have some options. One option is to have your family party without exceeding the noise ordinance. One option is to have your family party with noise at a different location, and one is to work with the residents that have complained about it and come to some agreement with them, in which case, I'd be happy to hear it again. Thank you, Ms. Cotton.
And a question coming from the council. And I think, another discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Another discussion? All in favor? All opposed? No. I don't fail. Madam Clerk.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Creola Ruffin.
My name is Creola Ruffin. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm here on behalf of the Gulf Coast Ethnic Heritage Jazz Festival and the things that we are trying to do in order to preserve our rich music history in the city of Mobile and to protect that history. We have here also...
Dr. Raoul Richardson. So good to see all of you council members and to the administrative staff of the mayor.
Dr. Richardson is here on behalf of Mojo Jazz Organization, and we also have Mr. London.
Hosea London, leader and manager of the Excelsior Band.
The city of Mobile has a rich history in so many aspects, and we acknowledge sports history, baseball, tennis, maritime, but there is one exception. We do not honor music, and we are here today to talk about that. We have nothing for music such as a Music Hall of Fame, and we also have nothing for Black Mardi Gras as a museum for Black Mardi Gras artifacts. The Gulf Coast Ethnic Heritage Jazz Festival will be celebrating and commemorating the Excelsior Band and the Elks Lodge at 601 State Street. That will take place on July 28, 2024 at 4:00 p.m., and we invite you to join us as the city's leaders. The Elks Lodge is the only Black Mardi Gras and music venue since 1921 in our great city of Mobile. It is now 104 years old, and it is the only building for that benefit that is still standing. The festival and Mojo is asking the city to help us protect and value our historic music treasures. The Excelsior Band has a rich history since 1883, being honored in 2023 by the National Endowment of the Arts, and it needs a home to exhibit that particular history. All the Black kings and queens who have sat on the front of the Elks premises since 1921 need a place, along with many others, to exhibit that particular history. So, Mobile, we are rich in history. Let's protect that in some sort of way. We have so many musicians from Mobile in jazz, blues, opera, and we just have an array of music that needs to be exhibited.
One minute, Ms. Ruffin. I have one council member with, one more minute. One minute. Excelsior Band has been in existence since 1883, as Ms. Ruffin has indicated. Other notable names of importance would be Cat 101, who has now recently just left us, the iconic Carmen Brown. These representations of music and cultural identity and history, the adjacency of the Dunbar School in the area of the State Street Lodge, all represent an opportunity for this organization, for this government, to be able to attract more visitors, to generate your sales tax dollars via your hotel fees, et cetera. But more importantly, it's an iconic destination and location that we can lift up and take advantage of.
One example of what we have to offer in Mobile's history is the Bay Carnival Historic Angels, who are sitting in the rear, and this is what we want to preserve for our history in the city of Mobile. Thank you.
Okay, and what, how many years does this make, Ms. Ruffin?
For the Gulf Coast Ethnic Heritage Jazz Festival, 26 years.
26 years, okay. Another, Councilmember Carroll.
Was there a question about State Street Lodge? Seems like you were asking another ask.
Well, no, there's not really a question about State Street Lodge, but the building is for sale, and we would like to preserve that particular building to display a jazz music hall of fame and our Black Mardi Gras history where it began at the Elks Street Lodge, I mean, at the State Street Lodge.
So are you asking the city to preserve the building?
We are asking the city to help protect our historic treasures such as the Elks Lodge and protect our historic history of Mardi Gras and music. We just lost Jimmy Buffett, a musician. He is being honored and sanctioned in New Orleans, but he went to school in Mobile, Alabama, and we have nowhere to put his artifacts. So that's just one prime example.
Ms. President. Mr. Penn.
Dr. Richardson, you had a question?
No, I was just going to point out that while the music represented by the Gulf Coast Ethnic Heritage Jazz Festival that I presented to you guys on numerous occasions over the years, we cannot leave out the value and importance represented in the education that's been provided musically, culturally, and otherwise to students as well as citizens across this great community. The fact of the matter is, the emblematic representation of the architectural building, which reflects the history and culture of the Mardi Gras organizations, needs to be preserved, and anything that the city, in terms of the council members and/or the administration, can do to assist in partnering with that type of activity has long-lasting impact and benefit to this community.
Mr. Penn.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Dr. Richardson, for sharing that information, and thank you, Mrs. Ruffin, for coming down and sharing about the Gulf Coast Ethnic Heritage Jazz Festival. I think it's very vital. We need this in our city, of course. Like you said, we have so many things taking place. We're building the civic center, looking, more information about Anthrax coming. We need things to showcase our city, and knowing the heritage, and even I love Dr. Richardson's point, from an educational standpoint, from performance arts with our young people and students throughout the city of Mobile, we have seen that kind of go down in the past, and we need something to lift that back up so our students can participate in these activities. So thank you so much for sharing. If you have any ideas or suggestions, how I could be supportive, please let me know.
And no questions or comments from this council. Thank you all so much.
Thanks, folks.
Madam Clerk.
Sabrina Mas. Now, we just heard about these rules and procedures, and you just violated them just now. So this is the thing.
Hey, to your subject.
Rules and procedures. Weaponization. You're weaponizing the police against the citizens. This has been going on for three years. Eight citizens so far this year and the last three years have been weaponized by the Government Plaza Police. It's clear on video. The videos don't lie. Witnesses don't lie. We are not disrupting a meeting. Whispering is not disruptive. Pointing is not disruptive. Let's keep it real. Just stop it. It's abuse of power. Now, the last time I checked, the sergeant at arms are standing in the corners. Am I right or wrong? The Government Plaza Police. Now, you guys have said that you cannot direct the mayor's office or their administration to do anything, yet you said last he could take citizens out of here. Make up your minds. You said you couldn't direct them, but you gave a directive. The sergeant at arms is sitting up in the corner. Now, I'm gonna tell you right now, Rosa Parks didn't give up her seat in Montgomery, Alabama, and Sabrina Mas no longer will give up her seat in Government Plaza, sitting in these seats for not violating any law. I haven't violated any law. I have not been disruptive. I have not done anything against the constitutional section code or anything. This is blatant abuse of power. Now, the next time, I'm gonna either go to jail or hell, and I'm not leaving out my seat.
Watch your language.
I'm gonna stand up for my rights.
Watch your language.
If I can stand up for other people's rights in the Constitution and protect the citizens, Sabrina Mas gonna stand up for her rights. I'm telling you right now, next time, I'm gonna be drug out of here when I know I'm not doing anything wrong. That is abuse of power. Weaponization of police. Let me tell you something. Do you know that maybe sometime, you better be careful, because see, these police that come down, you don't know what frame of mind nobody's going to be in, and some people just are not gonna comply. The only reason I complied that day is because I respect the police, and they respect me. And we have a long, long term of respect. That's the only reason I left out of here, because I respect the officers. But the next time, I'm gonna be drug out of here, I'm gonna be sitting there for my civil rights, uh, rights under the Constitution, drag me out of here. I promise you, I'm not gonna budge, and that's the facts on that.
Good morning, everyone. James Jackson, Jr. As you know or don't know, this is the anniversary of Juwan Dallas passing away when it was confirmed by the Mobile Police Department. But for the record, I wanna ask, why did it take two votes for me to get another minute last month? You can answer that after I get through. I feel very violated because of that. I'm here to bring my concerns about the accountability and the transparency with the Mobile Police Department. with the Mobile Police Department. Now, last time I was here, I was talking about the policeman that beat the young man with the handcuffs. He's still on the force. Last week, a correctional officer was fired and arrested for excessive force. So, was it because he was black, and this officer was white that's still on the force? I mean, that is not one Mobile. The one Mobile is a facade to me. My perception, a lot of people in the community, but they won't speak up because they're afraid. I'm not afraid to address y'all about it. This has to stop. Yeah, there are some bad apples in certain organizations' employment or whatever, but hold them accountable. That don't make it right. This mother, Ms. Dallas, has been suffering the whole year, even with the Common Cowboys making a mockery of her son, talking about shocking results. And she still hasn't got a, you know, she hasn't got response from the Common Cowboys. You know, it's sad that I had to have anxiety every time I see the police because I'm a big Black man, and I look fearful. So, any little move I make, it could cost my life. It's sad. We got to hold these officers accountable, even with Juwan Dallas. He didn't have to present his ID according to Alabama law, but they still confronted him and killed him. You can look at it however you want to, but that young man, he was violated. And these officers need to be held accountable. They're still on the force, and it's not acceptable. It's unacceptable. You fired the chief. He wasn't on video doing anything wrong, you know? He just wasn't going to type into our music or whatever, going along with the administration, if I wanted them to. So, do the same thing to these officers. Hold them accountable. I'm sick and tired of it. I'm sick and tired of this facade. Hold these officers accountable, arrest them, fire them, because I do not feel safe with them still on the force. Thank you for your time.
Sylvester Cheetham.
Mr. Cheetham, present.
Pat Law. Good morning. My name is Pat Law, and I'm also here on behalf of the Dallas family. One year ago today, Juwan Dallas died on this day, July the 2nd, 2023, during an unnecessary altercation with Mobile Police. Since then, the police chief at that time has revealed that the mayor's chief of staff actually leaked Juwan's autopsy to demonize him while you all were stalling. Then, on the day before Thanksgiving, I'm sorry, after 20 weeks of pleading, the family and their attorneys were finally allowed to view the body camera footage of that day. And what they saw, it shows, is horrific. They say they beat him. It was said that they tased him over and over and over. They say that they cursed him and his cries for help and mercy. They say the police clearly did not see him as a citizen. They are sworn to serve and protect. They saw this person as someone else. They treated him accordingly, even after he was clearly in distress, pleading for his life. They showed him absolutely no mercy and provided him with no real aid. So, as I stand here before you, I've been here before. We know this situation is not right, what happened. It happens too many times. We have situations in our communities that are devastating. We have a lot of crime against each other, but that does not give anyone with a badge the right to mistreat anyone. I've been pulled over for so-called speeding and approached in a way that I even felt threatened. So, as I stand before you and the way that Juwan Dallas was victimized on that day, this young man did a lot of good things in the community before that. This particular T-shirt that I'm wearing today honors a bookbag giveaway that's coming up very soon, where he would take time out to make sure that underprivileged children receive bookbags so that they could go to school. I presented each of you also a donation letter. Feel free to give and support this effort. So, we have to separate the images that we portray amongst each other and not single everyone out to be a bad person when you approach them. I know all of us are good people. We have good hearts, but there are people that have bad hearts, and we need to separate those and call them out for who they are and what they really, really stand for. Thank you.
Christine Dallas.
Ms. Dallas.
Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam Assistant City Clerk. Before we begin, I want to thank Director Snowden. I was able to speak with him this morning regarding the traffic matters. I think we can have that resolved and move on to the general items that are here today. To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I run us today to continue a conversation about these matters that are extremely serious for the city of Mobile. Oftentimes, as I hear people speaking down here and I look at the remarks and responses from the people up here, I wonder if we can ban some people that's down here out of these meetings as well, if we're gonna be equitable. Not anything personal. Remember, it's just the business of. We're talking about how the rules are violated. That's the thing that needs to be clear here. We're not gonna hold the citizens to one particular standard, then act differently, expect us to just go along with that. But now, this should be old, and you should expect that to be expressed here at this podium. I want to take this time to express my sincere regards to Ms. Dallas. I can't imagine how it feels to be in this. Public safety is a part of the subject. Once again, that's why I asked if we can ban the people in here who violate their rules as well. It's a double standard, and I would like my time to be extended as well because I was interrupted. Again, I would like to extend my regards to Ms. Dallas as she deals with this matter. Now, please stick to the agenda, Mr. Small. Let's look at these performance contracts. Have we inserted any evaluations for these matters? We have millions upon millions of dollars that have been released over the past 10 years, but yet we're not yielding the results of that investment as we see with the public safety concerns that we have here. Let's look at these performance contracts in a different light as well. Are we meeting the deadlines to what we're supposed to be doing? Because some people are submitting applications and getting no response, and then they're held off, and then they lose opportunity. Let's get to ARP. We have about 20-something million dollars that are left. We have to spend this by 2026. We're not seeing anything presented about what we're gonna do, and at least it's not been done publicly. So, it's been presented, it's only been done to y'all. And I don't think with Open Meetings Act and all these type of rules that you're being compliant to what the state says you have to do here. With this Civic Center, it reminds me a lot of the Chief Prime situation because we had all these inside, internal means of going about the business. We bought in these singular bid opportunities. We only reached out to a certain group of people. Then, we start saying this price for this one thing, and then we came back and said it was another price for another thing. So, they line up the same way with me, and yet we haven't had any serious response about what's taking place with the probably most prime piece of real estate property we have in the city of Mobile. But we have other ways of handling that, as you each all know. I want to get to this last piece of the public safety. We're getting ready to approach budgeting season. I hope that our investments will reflect the idea of supporting public safety so that we can be proactive in not bringing these situations that bring the disdain and conflict amongst our city. As well, I hope we're gonna put in the proper training once we come along, so we don't have to have these incidents that we revisit here, week after week, year after year, whatever the case may be. I think it's important as well, and this is a part of public safety for us in general, that we add a new review of these rules and how we do things in committee. But I'll submit that to you later. Thank you for your on the floor.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. To the administration with the ARP, can we, I'm not sure if we already have something on the website so we can get this information public so the citizens can kind of know where that funding going? Can we get something like that worked on? Just a request. Not a directive. Thank you, Mr. President.
Madam Clerk.
Catherine Flowers regarding Ordinance 39041.
Good morning. My name is Catherine Flowers. I rise to speak in opposition of granting exceptions to the hours in the noise ordinance in the city of Mobile. Allowing exceptions to amplified sound past a reasonable hour in or near a residential neighborhood defeats the purpose of the noise ordinance in the first place. Who gets the extension? I feel the extension is arbitrary. Such ordinances protect the serenity of residential neighborhoods. This action undermines that purpose. I have to say, it seems the way to find to bend the law in the favor of a select few or just ignore the law. I'm for following the rules, like y'all said today about the rules in this council. Progressive historic cities like New Orleans, Savannah, Charleston, even Austin, Texas, the music capital of the world, know that such ordinances enable a livable city. Such ordinances have proved their worth. Mobile doesn't seem to care about its residents who've chosen to live in and near downtown area. Ironically, this is a healthy trend which will give life to our historic downtown. When the infant mystics have a band party next door to us, the windows rattle. We can't sleep. Now, the organization has petitioned this council to allow them to party with amplified sound until 1:00 a.m. in a residential neighborhood. Quite a coincidence that the noise ordinance landed on today's agenda. It shouldn't be on the homeowners to check every week to make sure someone isn't asking for an extension of the waiver in their neighborhood. In the last year, we've looked over all the waivers. Not one, I think there might have been one waiver that asked to go past the time. I'm tired of saying it, but please follow the laws and ordinances and protect and serve the life of our city together. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn and Mr. Carroll.
This ordinance, Mr. Leonard, can you explain? Right now, our ordinance right now allow people in the residence to go to 9:00 p.m. So, this particular ordinance make it to 9:00, I mean, to 10:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday. So, it actually is a better ordinance of what you're speaking of was taking place from a residential standpoint.
Mr. Carroll.
So, this particular ordinance, because I received phone calls, now, I'm not in your particular district, so I can't speak what's taking place in your particular district. But because of some of the concerns that you did express, that's the reason why this ordinance came into place. Okay, all right. So, I just want to let everybody know because people might not understand the ordinance, and so I'm explaining that to everyone. So, it's supporting what you're stating. So, a lot of, I've been receiving phone calls about this particular ordinance. And the reason why is, again, what you're stating is that we're having these events, people trying to go to work, school, and we want to put something in place. Mr. Leonard, can you kind of explain that as well?
The amendment on the agenda lowers the noise ordinance kick-in time from 10:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday. So, in that respect, this is actually more restrictive than the existing ordinance. Other than that, what it does is it codifies the procedures for requesting a noise ordinance waiver. It just happened to be we were doing that on custom, and given the opportunity with this change there, we decided to just put in black and white in the city code exactly what the procedure is and to clarify a few things. As written, this amendment does give this council the discretion to grant a noise ordinance waiver that would go beyond 9:00 or 10:00 on whatever night the application was for. That would be in the discretion of the council, and the answer to the question, who decides? If they get it, well, that would be, at least five members of this council would have to decide that they get the waiver. There has been some talk, and Councilmember Penn, you brought me about possibly instituting a notice procedure for neighbors or something like that, and that's something the council could look at if they'd like. Because it stands right now, this does two things. It lowers it to 9:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and it codifies the procedures and makes clear that the council has the discretion. Not all, it doesn't have to use it, but the council can grant an application that goes past 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. if it so chooses. And also gives the council the discretion to set conditions, like if the council was inclined to grant a noise waiver past 9:00 or 10:00 p.m. but wanted to make certain conditions, like the band has to stop by 10:00 or something like that, then the council could do that. And so, the council has more discretion to tailor the application to what the council thinks is reasonable rather than just straight deny or grant.
Thank you, Ms. Leonard. And because I think we discussed about the possibility of amending this ordinance so notifications can come out, but I believe that that need to go to a committee meeting because enforcement is a major issue, and we need to figure out how that will look, the process. But I believe that this particular ordinance help benefit right now, and then we can kind of discuss how we'll send notifications, if that's possible. Thank you, Mr. Leonard, and thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
Mr. President, one important thing is missing, I think, and that's the term as defined neighborhood. There's gonna be challenge to that, what defines neighborhood, not ordinance. I think that Mr. Dave set a clear precedent today on when councilmembers are called about noise from a number of residents that live in a specific area. I've got at least five calls from residents that live either between Common, Conti, the little street across the street from 911 Dolphin Street in concerns about wavering of a noise ordinance on a specific day at a specific venue. And if we're gonna follow the same rule that we just followed for Sherringham Drive, then it would be beyond me not to deny the noise ordinance that's being asked for by the individual group that's asking for. I think that was a clear precedent set today that if we're gonna have those residents call and say that we have a problem with noise in a specific area, that we deny those requests for a waiver of noise ordinance like Mr. Joe did today. It just seems like that that's how we have to do it, especially if it calls for a, to be defined as a neighborhood where people live to the right, left, across the street, and it's within a proximity of residential structures. If we're gonna do that, then I think that within the ordinance itself, we need a clearly defined definition of neighborhood and how the standard's gonna be kept.
Mr. President.
Mr. Runners and Mr. Dave.
I'm trying to understand what Councilman Carroll is referring to regarding neighborhood. I'm just looking through the ordinance. I don't see anywhere in here where it says the word neighborhood. It may be in here, and I'm overlooking it, but it deals specifically with zoning classifications, you know, R1, R2, R3, RB, so on and so forth in here.
Ms. Leonard.
As written, and this amendment would not change it. This is this is amending the city code section titled Noise in Residential Districts. That's 39-96.1. And it only applies to residential districts. And under the definitions section, that's 39-96.1B, it says residential districts shall have the same meaning as in the zoning ordinance of the city, including single-family residence district, R1; two-family residence districts, R2; multi-family residence districts, R3; and residential business districts, RB, or as established by future zoning ordinances as residential. So, as it exists, what it does is it ties the definition of residential district into whatever the zoning ordinance says is residential.
Right, so if we're within a residential district bound by Conti, Dolphin, Common, I mean, that's Common and Broad, then we're within a residential district and noise ends at 10:00 p.m. Is that correct?
As per the current ordinance, yes.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Dave.
I would like to point out that the item that came up earlier today was a request in which all of the surrounding properties were R1. There's no, it's R1 as far as the eye can see. Now, I think Mr. Carroll's right. I think before we pass this, we need to take a better look at defining what a neighborhood means, what a neighborhood means. Because if you have a single-family residence that butts up against commercial properties up against commercial properties, I'm not sure that needs to be treated the same way as a single-family residence that's surrounded on all sides by R-one as far as you can see. But I think it'd be helpful for us to look a little bit more deeply into that so that we can understand what we mean by neighborhood. And maybe have some parameters, maybe have some, if it's this distance from commercial to residential, you treat it, I don't know, I don't know, but I'm not, I'm not ready to vote for this today, let me put it that way.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Wood.
Mr. Leonard, this, we did one thing that I just kind of brought to thought. We, we're in here now dealing with dumpsters and everything, we define dumpsters ahead. Is this mirroring the Chapter Nine, is it Chapter Nine garbage ordinance that we worked through? So this would be just a companion piece mirroring it?
It's not really directly mirroring the garbage ordinance. Literally, in drafting that amendment, I just changed every instance of nine, every instance where it's at ten PM to nine PM for Sunday through Thursday or ten PM, so it's only changing the existing ordinance. I looked through the garbage ordinance, I don't see any conflict with it, it doesn't really address this per se, but I mean, this noise ordinance does stop people from emptying dumpsters basically at night.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Mr. President. Mr. Reynolds. Ms. Flowers did make a very valid point, you know, and that is waiving the noise ordinance. This establishes a procedure, you know, it's kind of, we still have the authority, and we've been exercising that authority for years. This just sort of codifies it and makes it more structured, you know, so everybody is aware of the authority that we've been exercising and have had all along. But her point that, you know, what's the point of having an ordinance if we're just going to waive it, you know, all the time or haphazardly waive it, I think that's reasonable, that, you know, when a noise ordinance comes up or a request for a waiver of the noise ordinance comes up, careful consideration must be given to each and every one of them. You know, what is the capacity of the police department or municipal enforcement or whoever to enforce it, you know? Has there been any issues in this area before? Is it going to cause a major disruption? Is it just a temporary, short-term waiver? Consideration should be given to each and every one that comes up, and just because you request it, doesn't mean that you're entitled to a waiver. So, thank you, Ms. Flowers, for bringing those points to light.
I'm going to ask the council, when we get to this particular item, if we can, probably later, it's over for two weeks, and have a committee meeting on next Tuesday at one o'clock PM, and probably then sign that to the Public Safety Committee.
Madam Clerk.
Michael Meeks regarding resolutions forty, four-eighty and four-eighty-one.
I'm Michael Meeks. I'm here in Special Apairance to the County Jurisdiction. This whole matter started with a list, there was two list pendants, one filed on eleven-eleven Spring Hill Avenue, one filed on eleven-oh-nine Spring Hill Avenue. Both used the same tax parcel of eleven-oh-nine Spring Hill Avenue. So there was nothing that should have took place anywhere outside that envelope that's described in that property. Another question to that would be, some of the statutes say that it's supposed to use the legal description for the property, and these are not valid legal descriptions, these are tax parcel descriptions. Eleven-oh-seven Spring Hill Avenue that was demolished and eleven-ten Oak Street that was demolished have their own individual legal descriptions. Those addresses are not in the notices of the abatement. It only specifies eleven-eleven and says accessory structures. If you look up what accessory structure is, it could mean fences or walls. So there's nothing that describes a totally separate building. If you go to the inspection checklist, and even on this resolution, it says item twelve. Item twelve pertains to balconies, stairs, rails, guards, things of that nature. That does not exist on eleven-oh-seven Spring Hill Avenue, so there's no reason to think this applies. So, first and foremost, the notice came out for eleven-eleven, it never included eleven-oh-seven. The only time those came up, and that applies to eleven-ten Oak Street as well, which the bank owns, so I don't have any real interest in that, but they're totally separate legal descriptions, totally separate addresses of record, and they were informed by the Real Estate Department, the municipal enforcement was, that those were separate. Another big thing in this whole process is list pendants means pending lawsuit. There's not been a lawsuit filed, and all this is taken through instead of judicial action, legislative action, which in sense will create a bill of attainder, which is an unconstitutional act. You can see, I've been through a lot of research, there's a lot of violations in addition to this, there's no way I could cover it in three minutes, but from the inception of this action, it hasn't been handled properly, there's malfeasance or, you know, several things. And it's not even a public nuisance. Public nuisance applies to public property or the access to public property, this would be a private nuisance, so it's been mislabeled in addition to everything else as well. And I'm more than willing to answer any questions. This is a complicated property, it has four addresses, three legal descriptions, and two tax parcels. And there was an existing action with the mortgage company because it was subject to an existing mortgage, and property's been divided since, and that lawsuit's been revised, but it really didn't affect anything that's been said in the order.
Mr. Carroll, you have any questions or comments, Mr. Carroll?
Dave, did you have anything to talk on this?
No.
Did it go to legal now?
No.
Has it gone to legal yet?
No. I was saying, no, no it has not.
Well, what's going on then? Explain.
So, this is the first that we're hearing of it, but let us address this not in a public forum, another matter, and what I was telling, Mr. Doppinbock does not have commentary as to what he's, what the citizen has just said.
And there was no lack of due process without the judicial review and a neutral third party.
Alright, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance is held over, thirty-nine zero forty-one, ordinance to amend sections thirty-nine through ninety-six point one C and D-two of the Mobile City Code to change noise ordinance cutoff time in residential districts and to codify procedures for applications for waivers.
Motion layover two weeks.
Second. Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I layover for two weeks.
Consent resolution is held over, forty-third, three-eighty-two, declare the structure at four-forty-two Cottage Hill Road a public nuisance and order it secured, I'm sorry. Forty-four-eighty-one, eighty and four-eighty-one are fixing cost for demolition of the structures at eleven-oh-seven and eleven-oh-nine Spring Hill Avenue and eleven-eleven Spring Hill Avenue.
Mr. President.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
I was just asking that we take forty-four-eighty and forty-four-eighty-one with this newfound facts, we just hold those over, what do you think, Mr. Carroll?
Well, what we're doing is fixing the cost, which means that the work has already been done. My question to Leonard was, is do we have a problem if we move forward fixing the cost based on what we just heard?
I mean, the council can do it at once, if the council wants to waive the cost or take further action later, it can, or you can hold it over. I mean, it's in the council's discretion whether it wants to act right now or not.
Has there been any action brought forth against the city or against anything that we've been done to take any type of corrective measures at this time?
So what I would suggest you all do is hold this over so we can get you that information.
Alright, let's layover for a week. How long is it going to take to get us the information and to check into it, question?
It depends on what we find, I could give you that, but we'll get it to you expeditionally if you hold it over.
How much time do you think you need?
Oh, you hold it over a week.
Alright, let's hold it over two weeks, just to give them enough room, hold it over two weeks, please. Forty dash forty-one and forty dash four-eighty, layover for two weeks.
Second.
Properly moving second in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Did we approve forty-three-eighty-two?
There wasn't a motion.
Forty-three-eighty-two, I move to take up.
Move to approve.
Yeah, it was already consent.
Second, we just need to vote.
Yeah, we just need to vote.
Move to approve forty-three-eighty-two. Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Resolutions held over. If there's no objection, I'll take them all together except twenty-eight-five-sixty-nine. Zero-one-five-sixty-three, authorize and accept agreement with the state of Alabama for the innovating St. Louis Street project. Zero-eight-five-sixty-four, five-sixty-five and five-sixty-six are approving purchase orders to CDW Government for annual renewal of Cisco malware and network security protection software, to Dana Safety Supply for Chevrolet Tahos, and to Gray Bar Electric Company for aluminum light poles. Zero-nine-five-sixty-seven, transfer funds from Capital Project St. Louis Streetscape to grant fund innovating St. Louis Street. Twenty-one-five-sixty-eight, authorize contract with Johns and Kirksey for roofing repairs at Traffic Division Facility. Forty-seven-five-seventy and five-seventy-one are sending to the vacation of a portion of a service road and city right-of-way located at Knollwood Drive and Medical Park Drive, and considering a vacation fee as a condition of the said vacation.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passes.
Twenty-eight-five-sixty-nine, authorize waiving of all Mobile Airport authorities administrative, licensing and permitting fees relating to the Brookley Terminal expansion.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I have an amendment to offer as we discussed in pre-council, just adds a paragraph to it, and it's on file with the clerk's office. So I move to offer this amendment.
Properly moving second in the discussion, on amendment. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Going back to the original, in other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Consent resolution is being introduced, fifty-eight-five-seventy-three through sixty-five-eighty.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Fifty-eight-five-seventy-three, declare weeds noxious, group sixteen-fifty-eight. Fifty-eight-five-seventy-four, assess cost for removal of weeds, repeat weed lean, group seventy-five. Sixty-five-seventy-five, five-seventy-six, five-seventy-seven, five-seventy-eight, five-seventy-nine and five-eighty are determining appropriations to Opportunity for Entertainers and Performing Arts, Veterans Recovery Resources, St. Ignatius Parish, Japanese Garden Foundation, Opportunity for Entertainers and Performing Arts, and Hillsdale Heights Homeowners Association, serve a public purpose and approve payment. So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Resolution is being introduced, zero-one-five-eighty-one through forty-seven-five-ninety-six.
Move to waive the rules for immediate consideration of resolution twenty-one-dash-five-ninety-four, with the rest of these going one-week layover per council rules.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Madam Clerk.
Twenty-one-five-ninety-four, authorize contract with Mercurium Williams for Spring Hill Court retaining wall improvements. So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion.
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Vice President.
I asked to waive the rules on this because we have already transferred funds to the project. This is to replace a retaining wall as well as to tear down and replace some structures on this property. It is on city right-of-way property where there is a line of sight making it a public safety issue, so we would like to get this project moving ahead of when school starts because once this project gets going, we will have to close a section of Spring Hill Avenue, and for anyone who knows about school traffic on Spring Hill Avenue with three schools close by, it will be a tremendous headache. So, my goal is to get this project going and done before school starts, and this will be one of the first steps in making that happen.
In other discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item passed.
Call for public hearings, forty-one-five-ninety-seven, call for public hearing to consider the application of quality care on wheels to operate a shuttle service scheduled for July sixteenth. So moved.
Second.
Properly moving second in the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Public hearings called.
Announcements. President Small, I would like to announce that anyone wishing to submit a request to address the council at their July ninth meeting, that request should be received by noon tomorrow.
District five, Councilman Dave. District two, Councilman Carroll.
Yes, Mr. President, on July ninth, I will be speaking or attending the Midtown Community Meeting Group. This is, again, a section of District two that stretches from the western end of Old Dolphin Way to the end section of District two. That meeting will start promptly at six o'clock. I will continue to announce it over the next couple of days, it will be on our website, it will be on our Facebook pages, Twitter accounts, and everywhere else. If you have any concerns in that neighborhood or would like to have any information from the city at that time, please attend. That's July ninth, and that's the Midtown Community Action Group.
District six, Councilman Woods. No announcements. District four, Councilman Reynolds. District one, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend, I had opportunity to attend Neil Farrell Jr., Kansas City Super Bowl Champion, LSU Champion. At last day, we put on a great event for the young people, had a football camp. I also had the opportunity to attend the Senior Bowl Hall of Fame, where they inducted NFL greats that have came and played here in the city of Mobile, and I just think we have an amazing organization like the Senior Bowl, and we're blessed to have them here in the city of Mobile, and it was great to hear the stories from the NFL players, stated that their lives changed right here in Mobile, Alabama. So, thank you to the Senior Bowl. Also, I would like to let the Tomerville community know that we will have a community meeting at the end of July. More information to come, we have some more exciting news that we will be sharing with the Tomerville community, and so look forward to sending that information. Again, and thank you for allowing me to serve District one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Penn. District seven, Vice President Gregory.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. This past weekend, I was with the Distinguished Young Women at the Civic Center, which I believe is the last big event for the Civic Center, so everyone there was kind of looking around with a little bit of nostalgia, I believe. But this was the Distinguished Young Women sixty-seventh annual program here in Mobile. The winner was from Delaware, her name is Alicia Shue, and we will be meeting her as the year goes on. I was able to, or was asked to present the first runner-up winner, and that was the delegate from Tennessee. Just a tremendous program, as always, many thanks go out to the Board of Directors for continuing to hold this national program here in Mobile, to all of the sponsors, the host families, and the volunteers who all get together to make this happen. It is a two-week event for the fifty young ladies who were here in Mobile, so it was really well done, as always, and just congratulations to everyone who was part of this. Also, last week, some inmates from Metro Jail came out to the Hillsdale area and powerwashed the entrance markers. This is a program that Metro Jail offers. I was part of that by just sponsoring some funding for the Homeowners Association there. They provided the power washing items like the soap and that sort of thing, residents volunteered their water, and then the Hillsdale HOA provided lunch for the inmates, and they did a terrific job. I just want to thank everyone at Metro Jail, the warden out there, Sam Houston, and everyone who helped make this happen. I really think it's a terrific program that I am happy to be able to take advantage of as the rest of us can when you need it. So, thanks again to everyone at the jail for helping to do this, and for the HOA folks in Hillsdale for in Hillsdale for constantly being proactive and taking care of their neighborhood.
And greetings to the citizens of District 3. Um, last week, I had an opportunity to speak to the Jubilee Youth Services and Leadership Academy. Uh, would like to, uh, thank the group for inviting me out, uh, opportunity to speak to a lot of young people, and, uh, they were very excited and looking to go back later on this month to, uh, do some, uh, donuts and some juice with the kids. But again, I'd like to thank them for inviting me out on last week. Wish all the citizens of Mobile a happy 4th of July. The fireworks show starts at 9:00 p.m. on Thursday evening, correct, Ms. Smith? Fireworks show. 9:00 o'clock p.m.? Okay. 9:30? At 9:30 p.m.? Okay? Anything from the administration? Okay?
Motion to adjourn.
Promptly moving second in the discussion.